Thank you all very much. First item on the agenda is item B, open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, moving on to item C, recognitions by the superintendent of schools for the Lions Club and the librarian reading specialist, Dr. Pellegrino.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor Nicholson. You guys all know Becky McCaffrey, correct?
No, we don't.
So Becky, why don't you describe the program and what happened to the program?
So I think when I did my presentation last month, I mentioned that the Lions Club was really helpful in getting our vision and hearing screenings done at the elementary school. We got those done within the first month of school, which is awesome. A thousand kids getting all their hearing and vision and identifying those vision issues early in the year or hearing issues so we can accommodate in the classroom and get those issues corrected so that it helps with their learning, it's huge. They are going to come back after the first of the year to help us get the, we do one grade in the middle school, one grade in the high school, but they spent about a week and a half, full days, and I worked right with them and I'm not easy to work with because I'm like, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's give them. So I worked them hard and they were all very, very helpful and gracious and I appreciate their efforts so much. So I wanted them to be everyone's.
Yeah, and I think it's very appropriate because frankly, just, and what we're trying to do for kids is have wraparound services as much as possible and support our kids and our families the best way we can. We know parents are very busy, so being able to do things like this for them, you know, really is what we're all about, trying to make sure that kids are supported in every way.
And the other thing that they've been helping with for years, kind of behind the scenes too, is that when we have students that need glasses and they need replacements or they need assistance getting to appointments, or they pitch in and they help with funding to get new glasses and to help them to get seen. So that's another thing that they've been doing for years.
And without the support of an organization like this, we wouldn't be able to do it. So thank you all for doing this. Okay, so I'm going to call out your name, you come up and get your certificate, and then we'll just like take a picture afterwards too. Vicky Baker?
Thank you.
Steve Cormier?
Thank you.
Mark McPree?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ed Thompson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Linda LeBlanc?
Thank you.
Nils LaVada? Kate Margolis?
Thank you.
Ned Thompson again, I don't know how I got you twice, but.
That's what those vision tests are for. That's what those vision tests are for.
So the other two people that I wanted to be recognized, they're not here tonight, but they're staff members at Gardner Elementary School. One is the media specialist slash librarian. The other one is a reading specialist, right? Is that the title?
Right, yeah.
And so we basically took their space and they took their show on the road for a week and a half, which is really hard to do. They were very gracious about it and so they knew that they would be recognized tonight, but they couldn't make it, so.
Yep, and what's really with all of them, just in general, in terms of the media, the media specialist, the library is running really well and the kids are excited about reading, that's wonderful, and the reading specialist is really up to our game, quite frankly, and helping kids learn to read at an earlier age. And there are the two Jennifers, Jennifer Brow and Jennifer G. Cantarino. I gotta say that right.
Great person, Spencer.
As a Pellegrino, right? I gotta say that right. Excellent, so, and you can ensure that they get that tomorrow?
Yes.
All right, we will take a brief recess at this time and we will convene in two minutes. The committee will come back to order at 6:41 PM. This was included in your packet for information and review. It does include a donation from Yen Yen Chinese Restaurant of $2,000. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
A motion to accept the agenda is presented.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. LaFrenier, second by Mr. Schwartz to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. There, we will note that there is another donation for acceptance, however, that will be later on in the agenda. Item D, reports of our subcommittees, beginning with the facilities subcommittee, Mr. Schwartz.
Subcommittee met on Thursday, November 2nd. I guess the biggest thing that I want to report is, every Sunday I make a tour of the district, just to make sure all the buildings are there. And on the Gardner Elementary School, lights continue to burn on all three floors on the connecting tunnels. And on the north side of the building, the first and second floor is the middle of the building, the lights are on as well. I spoke about this with Mr. Anderson, and as you, hopefully you'll probably know that the lighting system in the new elementary school is pretty much automated. And at the beginning, we had a great deal of trouble with relays and automatic switches and things like that, and I believe the contractor for that school is still working issues out. So Mr. Anderson was going to check those out and either try to fix them himself or get the contractor to do that. And they were on again this past Sunday. Grass around the building is looking much better than it did before school started. I can almost call it grass, but it's coming along. One disheartening thing that I found at the elementary school, I had a traveler behind the building, and the rear wall on the admin side of the building was covered with chalk artwork. And I find this, to me personally, disheartening. It's a destruction and defacing of a public building, any building that shouldn't happen to. So I reported it to management and the administration's taken care of it. So I hope that it doesn't happen again. On the middle school, I suggested the leaves and the growing weeds be collected on the outside steps that are next to the gym. It could be somewhat of a safety hazard. And I suggested black growth around Building A and the courtyard, and actually on the east wall, the same thing, needs to be steam cleaned. Mr. Anderson said he would look into the problem, so we're just, I'll just continue to monitor that. At the high school, it's been a common thing, in the center ring, the admin, at the admin ring centering a classroom, so windows are open on second and third floor, south end of the building. Now, in this Sunday, there was only one window open, so I guess I really shouldn't complain, I should compliment the message, you know, to close the windows, especially now in this cold weather. When I went there, back there two weeks ago and I saw, you know, I just imagine thousands of BTUs just escaping other windows and the taxpayers are panned for that, so that's hopefully be reconciled and or corrected. The other thing I have, I guess is coming up on another agenda right, is surplus equipment.
Yes.
So we'll take care of that then. That's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion on that report? Moving on to the finance subcommittee, Mr. LaFrenier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two reports. First one is from October 5th. Finance committee met at Elm Street. We basically just discussed and reviewed the expense report. The questions were raised, I display them regarding the salary of the nurses. It was explained that from when we created the budget in February to now, a nursing reorganization had occurred and two of the salaries are in grants, not showed on our expense report. Also, questions were asked regarding out-of-district expenditures and collaborative expenditures. It's just the start of the year, but no problems are really foreseen budget-wise with that. We discussed, the pitching and batting tunnels are completed, dugouts were started, and the cleaning and the fluffing of the turf is occurring beginning of each month. That refers to an actual machine that we purchased to, basically the new football field is turf and it has to be cleaned and fluffed up, and there's a machine that does that. And we finally got that in and it's being used, and from what I understand, it makes a huge difference. We also were, had Casey Chisum present information regarding our one-to-one Chromebook initiative. She just kind of went over to let us know how inventories in collection and distribution goes with these units. We actually do have software for the inventory, so it's an inventory management system currently being used. Seems like it's a very good system, working really well, keeping very good track of them and damaged units and things like that, making things, sure that things are being replaced and make sure that they're being distributed to everybody and being returned to everybody each year. That was it for that meeting. Next meeting was on November 2nd. Right now, the meetings are fairly quick and not a lot of information is needed. We pretty much, we go over our expense report every time. If any of us have any questions or see anything that doesn't look, you know, looks different. Mr. Hawk always, you know, checks into it, lets us know. This particular meeting, it was just a question about the substitute teacher expenses, and so we went over it the last 14 years. And there was a few questions in there. Since then, Mr. Hawk was going to do, to get us the information, he has emailed us some of that. We'll be discussing that more at our next meeting, but everything looks good there. The dugouts say they were almost complete. The HVAC system at Gardner High School project is out to bid. Part of the consent agenda tonight was the approval of a $2,000 donation received from, and I'll try and say this, Xun Fa Lam Incorporated, Doing Business as Yen Yen. So I just wanted to make sure we got that out. That was very nice of them, $2,000 donation. Later on in our meeting will be another donation that you had mentioned about establishing a scholarship, so that'll be discussed later on in the meeting. And I believe that was it for that meeting. Thank you.
I do want to point out too, I believe this is the third year in a row that Yen Yen has made this donation to the schools.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much, Mr. LaFrenier. Moving on to the policy subcommittee, Mrs. Hurst.
We met on October 4th, and there are five policies for first read that you'll see in your packets, and we have four that will be up for second read that we'll vote on when we get to the agenda, right?
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Well, note that Xavier, our student advisory board member, was not able to be with us here today. He did provide us with a written report, so Dr. Pellegrino will read the report on Xavier's behalf.
The first note that Xavier wanted was, "Our athletic teams finished October really strong. Our football team won leagues and finished undefeated. Our boys cross-country team won leagues and finished undefeated. Our girls cross-country team won leagues and finished with only one loss. And our boys soccer team won leagues and finished with only one loss. And our unified basketball team is undefeated. Outstanding job by all of these teams for an amazing fall season with still more to go. We celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with various activities, including a celebration with Hispanic food and music. The event was well-attended and enjoyed by many of our students. We held our senior parent information night on October 19th. This gives us the opportunity to share important information about college applications, financial aid, and post-secondary planning to parents and guardians as their seniors prepare for graduation and what follows. Our marching band won the silver medal at MICA, the MICA competition on October 28th. Our Pumpkin Palooza and Haunted House returned on October 28th, and both were very well-attended and raised a lot of money for our junior and senior classes. And finally, the GHS Athletic Hall of Fame inducted several new members at a beautiful ceremony on October 28th. It was great to see previous high school athletes being recognized. Many of our current athletes helped with the ceremony. Thank you to the Hall of Fame Committee for organizing this great event."
Thank you very much. Xavier will hope will be back at a different meeting. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, I'm sure he will be happy to answer those at those times, but congratulations to everyone that he mentioned. Moving on to item G, discussion items, new business number, item number 3560, first reading of policies. ECAF, security cameras in schools for adoption. GBEB, staff conduct. GBEBC, gifts to and solicitations by staff. GBEC, drug-free workplace. GBJ, personnel records for adoption. These are in the packet this evening for information as they are for first read and will be voted on at a subsequent meeting of the school committee. Moving on to item number 3561, second reading of policies. EEA, transportation policy. EEAEC-JICC, student conduct on school buses. EEAJ, policy regarding motor vehicle idling on school grounds. And GBA, equal opportunity employment. These are all up for a vote this evening with a positive recommendation for acceptance submitted by the policy subcommittee. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion accepted.
Motion made by Mrs. Woodley and second by Mrs. Hurst to accept the policies as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Schwartz.
On ECAF, to go along with the state rules and regulations and the new revised city charter about non-gender items, on the paragraph that was added in the middle of the page of ECAF, fourth line down, it's his or her bus, probably would be better if it was their, T-H-E-I-R.
Yeah, with the city charter, it too, it was the student, so it's just.
That's all I have.
And that's in the policy that's up for first read tonight.
It's on the first read.
Yeah. So that's ECAF for the first read under 3560. Sorry, Mr. Schwartz, I didn't see anything about it. Is there any discussion on 3561, the second read policies this evening? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3562, this is the second donation of $100,000 to create a perpetual charity donation scholarship, received in memory of Captain Erky O. Minkinon, retired US Navy, for a Gardner High School student applying for a degree in preferably marine engineering or civil engineering. This is a vote to accept the donation and establish the scholarship in memory of Captain Minkinon.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. LaFrenier, second by Attorney Pallaven to accept the donation and establish the scholarship. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3563, field trip, Gardner High School band and chorus to Florida, Disney World, and Universal Studios for November 29th to December 4th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Pallaven, second by Mrs. Cormier to accept the field trip request as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Cormier.
This will be the third time I get to attend with students, having my third child going, and it's actually my fourth overall, because I attended the 1995 trip the very first year they got to go to Disney, as a student myself. It's a great trip. The kids learn a lot about independence and traveling, so it's more than just music and going to Disney World. My own children have come back with just experiences that you can't, you can't plan for otherwise, so I appreciate the committee considering this and approving it for the kids to go. My daughter might have had a slight panic when I told her we were voting on this tonight, because she thought it was a sure thing. And I said, honey, it is a sure thing. Thank you.
As someone who also got to attend this trip back in 2011 maybe, there are some master classes that the students actually attend too, with the performers and the coaches at Disney too. So the chorus students and the band students actually get to sit in a class taught by one of Disney's conductors in both of those programs so that they can see how the rehearsals run and how professional organization, not just a scholastic organization, would run too. Any other discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3564, declaration of surplus equipment. This is included in your packet. It's mainly technology equipment. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Attorney Pallaven to declare the items listed as surplus. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. Oh, yes, Mr. Schwartz.
Just to say for the public's sake that we're not declaring surplus of good, good equipment. It's well-used, some of it's broken, and cannot be updated anymore with the latest The, some of the screens are broken that, and it's so old that it's not worth repairing anymore. So we're, we're declaring surplus, basically electronic junk. So just to let the public know.
Anything over the value of a dollar needs to be voted on to be.
That's right. And we have some cash value of that for some of the components. When we get rid of it, they'll be, well, the city will hope it would be reimbursed with some money for this nice junk.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3565, curriculum coordinator update with District MCAS. Dr. Gogan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Tonight I wanted to give you some highlights on our spring 2023 MCAS administration across the district. Each year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education assigns an accountability status to each of our schools and to the district. And last year, our district accountability changed for the first time to not, a district not requiring assistance or intervention, so we're really excited about that. This year, as a district, we are still in the status of not requiring assistance or intervention. However, we do have two schools that were targeted as needing assistance. One was the Gardner Middle School. They didn't meet their, their criterion reference target of 13%. They are actually at 11%, so they're, they're just short of meeting that. And Gardner Academy's accountability status, they've never had an accountability status before because their numbers were too low to measure. And this year, the only reason they went into that status was because they had not enough students meet the required participation rate, which is also very difficult because they have very few students taking the MCAS test, so when one child doesn't take the test, it can put them into this status. So our, our major focus right now is on making sure that the Gardner Academy will, will have that participation rate and meet that requirement for this coming spring, but we're, we're going to spend most of our, of our attention on the middle school's accountability status to bring them back up to not needing assistance. On the next slide, I just wanted you to see how, how our progress has been. In 2019, Gardner Elementary School was in the ninth percentile and they were in need of assistance, and by 2023, they have doubled that. So we're extremely proud of the work that's happening at the elementary school, and with the, their, their greatest growth was last year with a 67% increase. However, with all the transition that happened last year, the fact with new curriculum and a new building and merging two buildings of staff and students together, we still had an increase of 3%, which is, which is incredible. So the work is continuing at the elementary school and we expect to see that number get even higher over the next few years. At the middle school, they're just kind of holding steady, and so the work that we're doing this year is really focused on how do we start to push them forward like the elementary school. At the high school in 2019, we're at the 25th percentile. Last year, we went up to the 41st percentile and we're holding pretty steady at the 40th Some historical trend data, just to show you what's happening with, with our literacy and our math and our science across the grade levels. What you're seeing here are these bars for each grade that is tested, and the bars from left to right represent the school years from 19 to 23, and you'll see there's a space on each, at each grade level because in 2020, there was no test, so you'll see no bar there. I'll draw your attention to grades five, six, eight, and 10, where we're starting to see those scores bounce back to pre-COVID levels, and the trend is, is going up in those grade levels. In grades three and four and seven, we're working at each school to identify why those, those numbers are, have dropped a little bit and what we can do to address those. In math, the, we have growth in all grades except grade seven, so we're really excited about that, and we're starting to, in many grades, be up to MCAS levels before COVID, and I think it's grade six that's, that actually exceeded that, so really proud of grade six and the hard work that they were doing.
And grade eight exceeded.
Oh, yes, and grade eight, thank you. In science, grade eight and grade 10 are both showing increases, and grade eight again. Well, it says grade nine, so in, let me just start with grade eight. They're up above where they were pre-COVID, so that's, that's great and they're continuing to move. It used to be grade 10, now it's grade, it can be different grades, but the science test is, could be chemistry, it could be biology, it could be environmental science, or it could be tech and engineering, and at this point, we've selected biology, so they take that in the ninth grade. So what did we find from all of this information? As we started to analyze the data across the grade levels and across content areas, we're finding that there's still gaps in the subgroups. Our largest gap between subgroups and the aggregate is with our students with disabilities, second being English learners, and third being economically disadvantaged students. So we are focused on those particular subgroups in the work that we're doing this year. And in both math and ELA, we're finding that it's, it's really the deeper learning with the critical thinking and reasoning that our kids are stumbling on, on the test, so that is our focus. So that is our focus. So what do we do about these things? This slide hasn't changed a lot from last year, because we're still focused on the same things. We're really focused on looking at the lessons that we currently have and making them richer with a higher level of rigor and expectation for all of our students and providing supports for students who struggle, so that they can reach those levels as well. We're implementing more formative assessments in the moment to change our instructions sooner, rather than waiting for an end-of-unit type of, of assessment. We're looking at, well, we already did this. We've already, at all grade levels and in all content areas, looked at standards for each grade level, what the grade levels are responsible for, and what does that standard mean to a level of mastery that meets an MCAS expectation. So all teachers have done that work, and now we're in the process of making those lessons meet that level of expectation. But there's something else that's not on this slide, because it just came up. We were awarded the targeted assistance grant of fifty thousand dollars for the middle school to, well, actually, it's now for the district, but because of the middle school's status of needing assistance, we've been awarded the grant to focus on improvements in that area. So we had a meeting with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education a couple of weeks ago. We've had several meetings in district to talk about what does fifty thousand dollars look like in terms of helping our, our students in our district. We're looking at district work to look at our systems and structures across the district, so that we have students at the elementary level feeding into the middle school that are more equipped and ready for the challenges of middle school. But we're going to use most of that funding for consulting on the classroom support systems that we have in place around SEL, and really focusing in on collecting data in each classroom at the middle school to see what are, what's happening at, at the tier-one level with all students that might be stopping learning from happening there. And they'll be working with administrators in that building and with the teachers to help support that work. In addition to that, we've started to look at professional development providers who can do some embedded PD and coaching with all of our teachers and administrators at the middle school to work on data-informed groupings and instruction and supports there. So we've, we've gotten a list of people. We'll start interviewing them in the next couple of weeks, and we'll hope to have them on board right after the holidays to get started with that work. So we're excited about that. We already have some structures and systems in place to do this work, and they're doing it, but it's slow. So we figured by having this extra money and having these extra folks with eyes on just the middle school specifically, but also with all of our administrators, so we'll be using, we'll be using that, that time with our professional development providers to work with all admins across the district, so the message is the same and the work is the same. So those are the things that we're working on now, and all of this is in alignment with the district improvement plan that I presented in September. So, you know, we're just continuing on with the work and focusing on the data that needs the most, the most help.
Attorney Palavan, I saw you had a question.
In regards to the math curriculum, I think it's new this year, right?
Correct.
So does it have more of the reasoning, explanation, critical thinking?
Yes. So the middle school actually adopted it in January of last year. We, we had asked for teachers to pilot, and we had teachers at the elementary school and the middle school piloting. And in about October, I got an email from some of the teachers at the middle school asking me for a meeting regarding the new curriculum that they were piloting, and I was afraid that they were going to say, this is terrible, I want you to get rid of it, we don't want to do this. But instead, in October, which was only five weeks into the school year, they said, we like this so much, we want all of our teachers to do this, so that we're not trying to do two curriculums at once. And I think one of the reasons why they might have liked it, and I don't want to speak for them, but one of the reasons that I liked it was because it's starting to flip the way that we teach mathematics especially. It starts with a problem of practice for kids to sort of think about and start to engage their thinking before they teach anything. And then they go into a small lesson and ask them to struggle with another problem. So it's constantly giving the work back to the students at a, at a pace that they can handle, and it also provides direction for teachers to say, well, what do I do if the kids get it, but some don't? So there's, there's levels of the lesson that the teachers can use to work with students who aren't quite getting it, to work with students who do get it, and work with students who need more, because they, they really have it and they're ready for the next thing. So that's one of the reasons why we adopted it. It's, it's more rigorous, and it's flipped to be more student-oriented rather than teacher-led.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Mrs. Hurst.
I just wanted to clarify that the subgroups that consistently test lower, that Gardner's not alone in that, that it's a statewide issue. So just to be aware.
Typically, it's students with disabilities and English learners and economically disadvantaged. And we're seeing in different grade levels, we're seeing that our English learners are doing quite well. And we are seeing some improvements with students with disabilities in some grade levels, so we want to make that more consistent across the district and keep reducing those gaps. I appreciate that.
I think it's important to know that it's not just something in this district, it's everywhere.
I just had a, for like growth year to year, because it's kind of hard when you're looking from like grade five to six in each one, um, did we, was there, was there, are we seeing growth, like, so like the kids who were in grade four, like last year when they were in grade five, are we seeing the growth that's needed between, or is that kind of stagnant?
It depends on the grade level. So in some ways, when we look at it from a cohort standpoint, we'll see that some grade levels we're seeing, for example, you might see a student in grade four, then when they're in grade five, there might be a little less growth, but in grade six, the growth shoots way up. And then, so it just depends on the grade level, but we are seeing that. And some of that could be instructional practices, some of that could be the maturity level of students. Sometimes we have a group of students that has, you know, a different level of need, so there's a lot of variability there, but we are seeing it in different grade levels.
So if you kind of, if you kind of look at, if you look at, I'm just going to take grade four, grade three, whichever you'd like, but if you look at grade four, in the grade which looks like twenty-one, they were grade four, it was a little over twenty percent. When they were in grade five, they were a little bit more than that.
Right, that's what I was.
And then in grade six, they were up over thirty percent.
Yeah.
If we kind of follow that cohort like that, we should be, they should be staying parallel or going up, that's what we're going, that's what we're trying to do. As we get better each time at teaching the curriculum, if their scores are going up each year in a grade, that's even better, because then we're going to have it exponentially.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
Let me be quick, just to mention too, with, with MCAS. Statewide, it's a fifty percent average need, meaning of our seating. So throughout the entire state, fifty percent is what this state is averaging. And that's because they up the requirement, the rigor of the test itself at every grade level.
Thank you very much. Moving to, on to the next item in our agenda, item number three, five, six, six. The grant administrators update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, moving on to item number three, five, six, seven. The special education update. This was included in your packet for information. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Moving on to item number three, five, six, eight. The special education parents advisory council update. This was included in your packet for information. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Just to note, it's a Zoom CPAC meeting this Thursday from seven to eight. Anyone wants to attend?
It's six to seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, six to seven. That's fine. Six to seven.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, concerns on that item? Moving on to item number three, five, six, nine. The Massachusetts School Building Authority new building project. Dr. Pellegrino, anything?
Pretty much the same.
Great.
Building's there. There are people in the building.
Yeah, Bob told us the building was there, so.
If it's not there on Sunday, Bob will. Moving on to item H, communications. Dr. Pellegrino.
You know, just a few things. You know, the boys soccer team, by the way, is playing tomorrow in Situate against Menom- Menominee? Menom- Men- Menamoy?
Monamoy. Isn't it?
Monamoy, thank you. Against, so that'll be a big game. I also just wanted to mention too, Lori Simpson, our, our ELD director, was just, it was a big shout-out to her. There was a community meeting on, on all the supports and things that are happening with our refugees and our refugee families and the supports that they're getting. And she was called out like personally because of all the extra work that she's been doing to make sure that we're having those wraparound services. So many people are, you know, have their hands in this, but I just wanted to mention Lori, because she's done a phenomenal job and has really done a lot of outreach and has been really thinking creatively to solve some of their issues. I also want to mention, you know, I went to PBIS, our, it was an international conference in Chicago. We did several presentations where we were asked to speak. But I have to say, in the opening, the opening keynote, they had fourteen thousand schools to choose from on the data they were going to talk about. And who do they talk about? Gardner Elementary School. It's, the, the work that we're doing there has been unbelievable. We just had, as a matter of fact, there was a monitoring organization called the Disability Law Center, DLC. And every now and again, they can say, hey, we're coming in, and we're coming in next week, and it's our, we're allowed to do this, and we're just monitoring. So we were, there was no complaint or anything like that, but they came in and they looked at everything special ed. They thought we were a model school. So things are definitely going in the right direction, but I was just, I was pleased, and I was pleased with the team, you know, who had to talk to a bunch of lawyers, asking a bunch of questions. Not that, no offense, no offense to anybody here, but lawyers oftentimes look for gray areas, they look for problems. And for them to kind of walk through and, and see like our systems and how we're doing things, it was a very positive experience for us. So I just wanted to mention those things.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on that report? Moving on to final comments of the school committee, Mrs. Wardley.
I just wanted to congratulate Rachel and John and Bob and Mayor Nicholson on your reelections. Very excited that you get to continue to do this work. And not much, just the season of gratitude, just very grateful to have this team, this community that supports our students and supports each other. And that's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Hurst.
I also wanted to congratulate everybody who, you know, in the, for the elections. I will say though, too, that it's been a pretty trying time as far as people's attitudes. You know, I, it's just disheartening sometimes to listen to people talk about, there's, there's a difference between illegals and refugees. And if anybody would seriously like to know what it's like to sponsor an illegal person, I can give you all that information. They are not here to take away from us, and that's a very important fact. And these refugee families, they deserve the respect and that you would give anybody else, because they're here for a reason. And we are lucky enough to know, to not know what it's like to flee a country in fear of your life with nothing but whatever you have with you. And that's my public service announcement.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Attorney Palavan.
I'd also like to congratulate everyone that got reelected and everyone that decided to run. It takes a lot to be able to put your name on that ballot. Also, I'd like to thank the Lions Club, because I do know that that's a process to do with the younger kids and go through all that. And obviously, the sooner you can identify that, like Nurse Becky was saying, the veteran is, especially for the, the sight piece, a lot of time, little kids don't even realize that they can't see well, because they're, that's how they've seen their whole life. So it's, it's great that we were able to do all of that and get it done so early in the year. And good luck to the boys soccer team tomorrow. It's a long trip out there. Let's, let's hope.
Thank you. Mrs. Schwartz.
Congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not going to congratulate you guys, because you already got enough. But I do want to say collectively for the school committee, I, I could probably make a correct assumption that the citizens voting for us are happy with what we're doing. So thank you to the voters who voted for us. I really appreciate it, and one vote does count.
As we saw.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's coming around the corner. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. LaFreniere.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations to everyone that was reelected or elected. And yeah, thanks to the voters, and like you said, it's nice to see that, you know, they obviously have faith in what we're doing and see that we're making good strides. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody and all the sports teams. So exciting. I thank them for such a great season all around, all of them, so.
And other than the Patriots.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Cormier.
As I've said to a few of you already, you're stuck with me for another four years, but I'm happy to be here. There's so much positivity in the packet this month, and I appreciate everybody taking the time to put that together. One additional thing going on at the high school this week is the GHS Drama Club play, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. They're doing a play called Oz. Having watched this program grow over the last ten years or so, as my kids have been involved, it's amazing to see how many artsy kids are out there putting themselves on the stage. And Mrs. Landry is very, very patient with them and allows them to be who they are, and I appreciate that from her. So if you can get out there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, see the play.
Just a couple of things on my end. Congratulations to this side of the room as well. It only took me till right now to realize that's how we split. But looking forward to working with everyone for the next two years on my end. And congratulations also to the band and all of our sports teams for a great fall season. It's real, I'm proud to be a Wildcat for sure. I think that's a great ambassador for the city out there. On a different note, I guess just for the committee to remain aware of this and for the benefit of those watching, the city has what's called an insurance advisory committee. It's something that's established under chapter thirty-two B of the general laws, and it's basically, it's made up of a non-union staff person, a retiree, and then one to two members of each of the unions that represent our city employees, and they meet to discuss different insurance matters whenever we have a plan change. So they did meet this earlier today on two proposals. The first one, they did vote to accept. That was a new prescription coverage for specialty prescriptions that are out there. We know there are seventeen employees that require certain specialty prescriptions that you can't just get at a regular CVS or Walgreens or something, you have to go directly to those specialty manufacturers. Basically, what it is, is for lack of every better term, it, it, Blue Cross provides us a coupon broker. That way, instead of the employee going to find a, to see if there's a coupon for this certain type of medication, which if that happens, the employee gets the benefit, but the city does not get the benefit on our health insurance trust, where we're self-insured on our health end. This provides it to both the city and the employee, and makes it so the employee doesn't have to go out and find that coupon themselves. It basically automatically puts it into the health insurance plan. So the committee did vote to accept that proposal, and that'll be put in place for the upcoming calendar year. It's projected to save the city ninety-five thousand dollars a year, and the employees, they were paying around forty-five hundred dollars a year. When you add the seventeen employees up, it's projected to drop that down to two hundred and thirty dollars total across those seventeen employees. So it should save a lot of money for those employees who require those services. It'll also let employees know if they're getting medications that they don't know are, have these coupons available too, because over two hundred and twenty or so prescriptions are covered by this program too. So we're expecting it to help our employees a lot. The other one that they're going to be meeting again sometime in the future, before the month of December to review, is under the current policies that we have right now when an employee is hired. We take out two months of health insurance in their first paycheck. That way, we give them, it's their first month, and then a month after they leave service of the city is covered. This does not affect our retirees, because those transition into our retiree health insurance. But right now, if someone either resigns or is terminated by the city, they get a thirty-day grace period still on the city's insurance. No matter how long they've worked, so if someone works a week and then decides to quit, they then get an additional thirty days before they can then get COBRA benefits. So this doesn't impact at all if anyone gets COBRA benefits after they leave the city's service. The proposal is to remove that thirty-day grace period at the end if someone is either fired or resigns from service from the city. That way, it removes the liability on the That way, it removes the liability on the city's end that if someone works a week and then in their thirty-day grace period has a, you know, horrific accident, that's now on the city's end to cover the cost of that, even though they aren't employed by us anymore. If that does go through, we'll be giving all of our city employees a health insurance holiday for the month of December, but the city will still pay on our end too. So that should pay back that pre-thirty day that our employees already paid. And then moving forward, we wouldn't take that extra last month out of that new employee's paycheck too because we're running into a lot of issues where, on the school side, where the school's paid biweekly, that could be upwards of five to six hundred dollars in a paycheck that's taken out in the first paycheck. That's because it's double in the first one. So we'll keep you in the loop on if that does move forward. But again, that's up to the way the law works because the city's accepted that portion of the general laws. It's that committee votes and that way we don't have to go and negotiate with each union after that since they have a member on that board. That's considered the negotiation with that. So I know I don't normally talk business stuff at the final comments, but I figured that that affects the school employees too. So might as well get it out there. But that's all I have for this evening. We have no executive sessions on the agenda. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Palavan to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Happy Thanksgiving.